Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the November 4th Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note, all council members are present. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations. First, we have a young lady in the back of the room who's here from, she's homeschooled and she's doing a local government project, so welcome. And I have assured her that if she has any questions of us, we'd be happy to answer them for her, so, welcome. I guess this is a good news situation. Happy birthday, Alan.
Hey.
You're with us.
I'm here.
I'm not even going to get into the age thing because I'm right with you, but happy birthday. Thank you for sharing it with us tonight. If you haven't voted, you still have time. Polls are open until 8:00 PM. You can look up polling, look up your polling places on the Cootney County website. Also, we're saddened that Wayne Knudsen passed away this week at the age of 87. Wayne was a well-known, respected car dealer and civic leader. His funeral service will be Thursday, November 13th, at 12:00 noon at Lake City Community Church in Coeur d'Alene. And our, the council, my thoughts and prayers are with Eve and Eric and the family. Wayne had a big impact, not just on the car dealership business, but on the community and the area as a whole. City Hall business offices are closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. The police department will be open. The Planning and Zoning Commission has been rescheduled from Tuesday, the 11th, to Wednesday, the 12th, due to Veterans Day holiday. And on Thursday, November 13th, I will be swearing in the Mullen Trail Elementary Student Council. And I got to do that last year, and that's just a lot of fun, to go see these kids who are stepping up to take leadership roles in their school. Post Falls Chamber of Commerce connect for lunch on Tuesday, November 18th, and I will be giving the annual State of the City address, talking about economic development, competition to recruit businesses and city projects with a lasting impact. We will also be taking a look back at some of the headline news of the past year. November is National Homeless Awareness Month, and St. Vincent de Paul, North Idaho, has several community events planned. Saturday, November 8th, is the Veterans Run. It starts at O'Shea's with a free pancake breakfast afterwards. The event starts at 10 o'clock, and O'Shea's is at the end of Sherman Avenue, as it turns into Lake Shore Drive. Second item is Monday, November 10th, which is a vigil for the homeless and independent point, 5:30 PM. Free event, and everyone is welcome. And Thursday, November 20th, support the end of homelessness event at the fairgrounds from 11:30 to 1:00. It's $10 for all-you-can-eat soup, and I know I have participated in that for several years, and bring your money, because it's a $10 entry fee, but we will try to fleece you to raise money, so bring change. I'm also happy to announce a new business coming to Post Falls. Advanced Thermoplastic Composite Manufacturing, also known as ATC, will move to Post Falls from Spokane Valley and bring 70 jobs with them. They expect to add at least 50 more jobs in Idaho over the next several years. The company is building a $4.9 million, 65,000-square-foot facility in Post Falls. ATC is the first Washington company to take advantages, take advantage of Idaho's new tax reimbursement incentive program adopted in the state in July. So, again, we're seeing good things come from that already, and we welcome ATC to town. Next item is a press release that's going to be going out from the city, an article in the Coeur d'Alene paper, a week or so ago, that myself and several others take exception to. Recent article in the Coeur d'Alene Press entitled "No Light, No Candy" by Keith Cousins on October 28th, stated that sex offenders who are on probation or parole are required to keep their porch lights off Halloween night, and warned parents to not trick-or-treat at residents where the porch light was turned off. The issue we have is that the article listed data from the Idaho Sheriff's Association website, saying Post Falls is home to 80 sex offenders, Hayden, 34, Ratham, 28, and Coeur d'Alene, 16. That number is totally misrepresented. One is too many, but they have many more than 16. City Administrator Shelley Andrewt has said, "We looked into this because the article showed much higher numbers for Post Falls than it did for the county's largest city, and the difference in the numbers was concerning," if they were correct. Research showed the Idaho Sheriff's Association website and the Idaho State Police website had different numbers for sex offenders in the city of Coeur d'Alene. Coeur d'Alene has 145 sex offenders, according to the Idaho State Police website. Again, there'll be a news release coming out, and it's not that we're trying to point fingers at Coeur d'Alene, but anytime you see something like that where the numbers are so skewed or misrepresented, I think it warrants bringing it forth. So, Kit, thanks for the information, Shelley for your comments as well. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? With that, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the October 21st, 2014 council meeting. Item B is payables, October 14th through October 27th, 2014. Item C is the alcohol license for downdraft brewing located at 416 West Seltice.
Any questions, Shelley? Not have an entertaining motion?
I'd move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
I want to thank the police department, and I believe the city clerk, for helping downdraft brewing get through what they saw as a crisis. And as a businessperson trying to get something open, I'm sure it was a crisis for them, so thanks for stepping up on that one.
Well, and to follow up on that, I don't know if all council saw it, I hope you did, but he said it's a very nice thank you. Also extending thanks to the police department clerk for job well done, so thank you very much. Further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Citizens' issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please come forward and give your name, and we will allow five minutes for Clement.
Good evening. I'm Mike Cronin. I live in Post Falls. You know, I just received my bill with a 15% increase in sewer discharge charges. When is this going to end, and how do you justify a 15% increase?
Well, it's unfortunately pretty easy to explain. We had several public hearings on it, it's been in the news, but we are mandated by the EPA to upgrade our wastewater facilities to meet their standards. And over the next, I think 10 to 15, 15 to 20 years, the city will be required to spend between 70 and 90 million dollars to upgrade. And the projections that were shown, and our finance director can get you the information on the increases that have been proposed, that we have had and that have been proposed. Mr. Malloy has been a very frequent critic of that number, but he also understands it, that is something that's out of our control. We either comply or get fined, get shut down, et cetera. And so that, that is where that particular increase is coming from.
Well, how do we find out what percent of the city budget goes towards those EPA requirements?
You can check with the finance director. They'll provide you any information you need. It's all public record.
You know, I'm a disabled Vietnam era vet. I live on 1,600 bucks a month. You know, between this and a separate bill for Ross Point and a Vista, it's getting out of hand, and it's like a rubber stamp. Every year, you're going to be raising the water discharge fees to meet EPA requirements, but how do we know how much money is actually effective into meeting these demands of the EPA?
You okay?
Yeah, we have a 20-year master plan that actually will spell out to you how much money is going into the improvements for this.
Okay. And how do we trim some fat from the city budget so us homeowners don't get clobbered, you know, every year with this?
Well, the utilities themselves, based on the information we have, went up $5.41 a month, on average. Out of that, $4.90 of it, $4.90 was for the wastewater. So, excuse me, the increase then for streetlights, sanitation, water connection, water use, went up 51 cents a month. So, I appreciate what you're saying, and I hear you loud and clear, but unfortunately, the city spent in excess of $500,000 on legal fees plus engineering fees just to get to the point that we are with wastewater and what is required by the EPA.
So, why don't we protest to the EPA that the stringent requirements they're setting are unattainable?
That protest was made by ourselves, the city of Coeur d'Alene, the city of Hayden Lake, and probably went on, city of Ratham, and it went on for probably two or three years.
Yes.
And again, we spent in excess of a half a million dollars in legal fees, trying to fight it.
You can't fight the government, is that it? Like you can't fight City Hall?
Well, and the problem is, anytime you're going up against a federal agency, they got a lot bigger checkbook than we do. We, it's, we got it to a point that we could not like, but we could make work, and it was much better now than what they had originally.
So, we can expect like a 15% increase in?
I'll defer that to our finance director, and he will get that information.
All right, there's, there's one other comment I gotta make. Why don't you send something with your bill a month ahead of time to announce these raises? Because I talked to Deidre today, and she said it was in the paper. Well, I don't read the local paper. I think you guys have a responsibility to let us know in the mail when these things are happening.
I thought there was notice that was sent out, but that's a good point. Thank you.
That's all I gotta say.
And if you need information, though, our finance director can get it for you.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Next item, new business, Main Street naming. Shelley, you handling that? How you want to do it?
Well, the discussion is brought up on whether or not the city would like to look at naming an existing street Main Street. Currently, we only have one street in the downtown area here that has no addresses on it, it's McReynolds, which is in the landing. The only approval we would need for McReynolds would be the owners of that property to approve it. If we looked at renaming Third Street or Railroad, you'd have to have 100% approval of the people living on those streets to rename that street, if the city chose to rename one of those streets. I think Carrie was the one that kind of brought this topic forward, so I don't know if you have comments that you would like to make at this time, Carrie?
Yeah, and I appreciate this, making it to the agenda. And McReynolds Street, streets run north and south, and avenues run east and west, so McReynolds is a north-south street, so it lends itself to being actually named a street. But this discussion, not specifically on Main Street, but probably for 20 years, or at least as long as I-90 went through and really bisected the community, what we, what we've been doing in the last several years with the building of this building, the Chamber of Commerce building, and what's being, what's happening, and what's been taking place to revitalize downtown, we've kind of taken ownership of, we're going to clarify to the community and the outside, hopefully visiting public, where our city center is. And there's probably few things beyond the phrase of Main Street, whether you're using it as an adjective or a noun, that clearly designates where your center of, not necessarily population, but activity, you know, whether it's cultural activity, business activity, commerce, that type of thing. And since there is no development in that, the landing area now, the timing is, the timing is, I think, really appropriate to bring this forward while we've got the revitalization and we've got those lovely islands and that landscaping and everything that we're doing in the city center. So, it makes sense. And I will, I will note Ratham has a Main Street, a traditional Main Street, named Main Street, that runs east and west.
I was gonna say, doesn't it run east and west?
Yeah, that runs east and west. And Spirit Lake has a Main Street that has an E at the end because it's named after the state of Maine, and it runs east and west. But Coeur d'Alene's Main Street is only several years old, and it exists in Riverstone. But, yeah, so to have a, have a Main Street here in Post Falls would be largely symbolic since it will not be a main thoroughfare, and there won't be parades on it and that type of thing. But it will give that identifier to people that this is, in fact, our city center, so...
And we have John here, who can help answer any questions also regarding the change of street names.
Bid in.
I just have a question. Carrie, did you say that there is a Main Street in Riverstone?
Mm-hmm.
Where is that?
It also runs east and west. They didn't play by the rules.
It doesn't matter how it runs, I just want to know where it is.
Well, if you were standing in front of the theater, facing away from the theater, you'd see it, it's right there.
Any other comments, thoughts?
I have a couple of questions for John on that. John, what's involved in renaming an existing street versus, I mean, as far as the addresses go? As far as, where I'm coming from, as far as Main Street, I would support it if it was, in fact, a Main Street.
Right.
You know, if it, and for me, it'd be like, what I could envision would be from the highway to the river, what is now Spokane Street. So, what would be involved in changing the addresses? Is that a long and involved and?
It takes getting 100% of the budding property owners on board with that proposed address change for that, that renaming for that street segment. Problem with that is it's not preferred to have a continuous street, change names from an E-911 standpoint. And then with McReynolds, from a kind of a built environment standpoint, McReynolds is going to be an access road that more than likely is going to access parking lots for either front-loaded development that's going to be facing Spokane Street and/or Third Street, so that's something to consider, too, when it comes to McReynolds.
Who is McReynolds?
What's that?
Who was McReynolds? Who's the street named after?
I don't know who the, the street name was. Part of the original landings project that kind of carried forward.
Alan, do you have any more questions? Share a couple.
No, I'll just that. I mean, what was in, what would have to be involved in?
Okay.
You gotta get 100% of the people on the street.
Okay. Linda, you had a comment?
Well, I agree with Alan. I don't think that you can, for, for safety reasons, start and stop the name of the street, and the only street that it makes sense doing is Spokane Street. So, that would run from Prairie Avenue or, yeah, Prairie Avenue to the river. And I think the cost to the people along that street, I mean, they have to change their addresses with all of their bill paying and all of their house numbers. I mean, I think that there's a lot that goes into it, and I don't, I don't know. Unless it really is a Main Street, I don't think it's a good idea. And McReynolds is, was named after Harry Green's son that died. His name was Mac.
Skip?
I agree with Linda, but I got a feeling if we went out in the community and said, "We're going to rename and create a Main Street," that Linda, I think rightly so, says, "Well, Spokane Street." Well, I think we could get 30 or 40% are going to say, "No, it's Seltice Way, because it's our major business street also." To go back and create one that's in a backwater of an undeveloped area, I'm, we're going to have one, let's be proud of it, not use it to feed parking lots and backloaded businesses. I grew up in a town that had a Main Street, it was kind of cool. It was actually Highway 93, so it really wasn't Main Street, we just called it that. But I can't see going through the 100% vote or attempt to get 100% vote to change any major street in town. It's not going to happen.
I agree, 100%.
Any comments? So, how does council want to act? You want to further, let it go for the time being, or? I'm getting a feeling that probably not much interest in changing the future street. We need a motion on that, Mr. Cafferty? It just was discussion purposes, I think.
It might be nice to have a motion for direction for staff, since this has been out there for so long, but there, you don't, if you're not going to take official action on it, no, you wouldn't need a motion.
I would move that we not move forward with the renaming of a street or creation of a Main Street in Post Falls.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Nay.
Thank you, motion passes. Administrative sta, I, I'm sorry, ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Administrative staff reports?
No report, but we are going to be moving the November 18th workshop on city standards, and want to know if, on the first meeting in December, if council members would be available to have that workshop. We'd like to have every council member there, because we're talking about the city standards for, such as we have had in the past on the parking lots, and the paving of parking lots, the number of parking stalls, so we're looking more at the commercial side of this, and the standards that these businesses are having to meet when they come into town.
Mr. Malloy sent an email today, I don't know if everyone saw it, brought up some very good points.
Thank you, by the way.
We want to make sure that you're available, so... First week of December is good, yeah.
Shelley, when would it be?
We're looking at the first meeting in December, if that would be available for council members.
Could we have a packet?
Yes, you'll have a packet.
Okay. And I'm all for it.
Yep, the second.
Put a Christmas ribbon on it.
Just send it for the packet. So, I give you what you need, Shelley?
Are you available?
Yep.
Okay. That's, that's all I really needed.
Okay.
We will try to complete on the November 18th workshop, the discussion that you had in September with Will Harrington on the process. Originally, that was scheduled as being a joint workshop with P&amp;Z and the council, so we will move forward with that.
And that will be in?
November 18th. So, it'll be a lighter topic.
So, I'm sorry, we have two workshops, the first Tuesday, and then also the 18th.
We're trying to schedule it for the first meeting in December instead of the second meeting, because the second meeting in December, we know people will have holiday plans.
Okay.
Linda?
I'm just kind of wondering with, I haven't heard anything about this for a while, and when we were talking about with Hillary about changing the SMART code, changing the subdivision code, you know, it just kind of died on the vine type of conversation?
Yes, I met with Hillary, kind of on her exit list as she's headed over to the city of Coeur d'Alene, and we are going to take the Title 18 changes. I have a couple pages of changes that need to be updated to Title 18. We'll bring that forward to council in December, and go ahead and get the Title 18 updated first, get our planning manager on board, and then we'll look at doing the merge of SMART code and Title 18 at that point.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports?
That's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thank you. Council comments?
Since we brought up Veterans Day on the 11th, there's a couple of us that are concerned about the Marine Corps birthday on the 10th. So, the day before, all the veterans get to party, the Marines get to party on the 10th. I just wanted to bring that. Right, Carrie?
At Templars, yes.
Yes.
And you may still be going until the 11th.
I may be. It's happened before.
239 years.
Yeah.
239th birthday of the Marine Corps.
I don't look that old, do I?
I was wondering if the chief could give us an update on two of the issues that have come for us, past the drug house and now the Speed Street, 12th Avenue or whatever.
Drug House and Speed Street, so...
Can we change that street name?
There you go.
Really don't have an update on 20th Street. We continue to patrol up there, haven't had any problems that I'm aware of, haven't had any criminal calls for service. We did have, I think, a warrant arrest up there in the last couple of weeks, but it seems like everything's going well, so really not much of an update there.
Chief, real quick, if I can ask a question, follow up. There was a discussion about foreclosure, et cetera, taking place, was it November, is that?
The 7th was the date that we were given, and I don't know where we're at on that. We'll see what happens on the 7th, but we'll definitely follow up on that. The speeding, or the 12th Street speeding issue, again, we've been working on that on a daily basis, have had patrol up there. The police department and engineering actually went up to the site and walked the site. We've added a speed sign for eastbound traffic on 12th Street to try to better inform drivers going along there of what the speed limit is. And it seems like it's been going fairly well. We've had a couple of citations written, but all in all, it seems like they're making a difference. So, those are the updates on those two.
Great, appreciate it.
If I could, oh, Jim. Have we, along with engineering, looked at the idea of getting a stop sign somewhere in the middle of that raceway?
I don't think that discussion has gone on yet with engineering. I know engineering did a study up there, and they put the results out today. I haven't had a chance to look at those, to see what they found with the, the speed tubes that they put out, but I'll bring that up for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I appreciate you guys' efforts on both of those issues, especially because, you know, it's something that the citizens brought to us.
Sure.
I really appreciate the fact that we respond to that, so...
Yeah, we actually went out and met with the complainant, we met with him a couple of times just to keep him up to date on what's going on, so he's very well informed, and it's certain, neither one of those issues are over. They're a continual process that we're working on, and we'll continue to keep you up to date.
Good. Thanks, chief. Carrie?
Mayor, I apologize, did you mention the senior center fashion show?
It was not on there.
Okay, then I will mention that Saturday, November 15th, the Post Falls Senior Center is having a style show from their thrift center, and it, it should be a great event. It's in the afternoon, don't have the exact time, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, on Saturday, the 15th. And I just wanted to say, there had been so many predictions, it's election day, and I love that many of us are wearing our "I Voted" that didn't fall off yet, but there were so many predictions of this being a low voter turnout election, and I don't think that's proving to be the case. In precinct 24, my precinct, I just got an update right before the meeting started from Chris Pappas, who happens to be working that polling place, and 224, as of about 5:45 PM, had voted at precinct 24. By comparison, in the May primary, 103 people voted at that precinct. So, I say kudos to everyone who votes every time, but it sounds like we've got a lot more voters out this year, so that's great news. I hope to prove the pundits wrong locally about voter turnout, so thanks for being part of the process.
You? I voted right before I came, and I was 3:47, so...
What is your precinct number?
23.
We are going to vote right after the meeting, so it'll be a walk to vote, so...
Four days ago.
Three times.
Any further discussion? Council, our mayor comments, I have none, I think we've covered everything. Can't think of any, and I know we do need an executive session.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 67-23451C, dealing with the acquisition of real property, and that there will be no action taken during this session, and the session will last no longer than 20 minutes.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes, and we will enter executive session.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes, and we will enter executive session.